Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals on Monday, December 11th, 2023. This meeting is being recorded by our secretary to make minutes of the meeting, but we're also making the recording that will be posted on the WHCA website in accordance with town bylaws. So our first case tonight is case number 18. Location of property, 250 Stetson Street. Type of district, industrial. Type of structure, detached garage with apartment above. Owner's name, Dennis and Terry Smith. Owner's address, 250 Stetson Street. When did you acquire this property? 1984. Has application been filed with town clerk? No. Has any previous appeal been made? No. Actually, I assume the application's been filed with the town clerk because that's what we have here. Section of bylaw of which relief is requested, 240-5.4 and section 240-6.6 accessory apartments. Sitting on the case will be Mr. Andrews, Mr. Curran, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Blas, and myself, John Goldrosen. This time we'll have the reading of the list of abuttes unless I hear a motion to waive the reading. If not, a motion by Mr. Andrews. Is there a second? No, I'm not hearing the second. Go ahead and read the list, Jim.
The following is an abutte list, a requirement of the State Zoning Act, kinds of interest for the property located at 250 Stetson Street within. Bear metal, impactful ID 5-73-5. Edgar R. McCarthy, et al., Trustee McCarthy Brothers Realty Trust. Two Constitution Circles, David C. and Jennifer L. LaRosa. Four Constitution Circles, Michael J. Manley, Nicole Willet. Four Constitution Circles. Five Constitution Circles, David T. and Roberta A. Palado. Six Constitution Circles, Paul F. Jr. and Terry Willis. Three Freedom Lining, Jacques T. and Karima K. Kanan. Seven Freedom Lining, James M. Jr. and Gina El Delaney. Off Old Colony Way, parcel ID 28A-73-306, Old Colony Village Development Corp. 18 Old Colony Way, Jason C. O'Neil, 18 Old Colony Way. 20 Old Colony Way, Scott D. and Anne M. Gordon. 22 Old Colony Way, Derek M. Smith, Gil Anne Smith. Stetson Street, parcel ID 28A-73-231, Town of Whitman. Stetson Street, parcel ID 28A-73-239, William E. Senior and Joanne Russell. 705 Old Lemon Street, Halifax, Mass. 225 Stetson Street, Lisa L. Emery. 226 Stetson Street, William A. and Don J. Farley. 237 Stetson Street, Richard T. Anderson. 238 Stetson Street, Andrew M. Dowell. Suri Dulaikah, District 11.
Okay. And I neglected to say the, this case was advertised on November 22nd and November 30th in the Whitman Hansen Express. So any, who is here on this case? Anybody else? Okay. Would you just raise your right hand and take an oath? And both of you, would you solemnly swear the evidence usual given this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth? Excuse me, and nothing but the truth? Okay. Would you introduce yourself for the record and explain what you want to do?
My name is Prince Aspman, I own 250 Stetson Street, along with my daughter Terry. I want to build a accessory garage with an apartment above it for my daughter to live in. Be a 24 by 36 is what I'm currently planning. Hoping to do that as long as I can get a decent price.
Okay. You want to explain what the garage will look like, what, how tall it is, what, you know, what the rooms are going to be and so forth?
I should have made some more copies of this and just spotted this lap tonight, but it would, this is what it would look like.
Okay, I'll pass it down. Okay, so two, basically two-story garage, the automobile garage on the ground floor, the living quarters on the second floor with a door on the side, which I assume goes up to the...
And that would be the first floor.
Okay.
And then the second floor.
Yeah. And so, one bedroom, what's it?
It's showing two, she would be able to work from home, so one would actually be a bedroom, the other one we would make into an office.
Okay, and then sort of open living dining room, kitchen.
Right, and a bathroom.
Kitchen where you walk.
Bathroom. That's basically just a generic drawing off of a, you know, Google.
Okay.
But some minor changes. Might put the laundry on the, on the same floor with the living space as opposed to on the first floor.
Okay, all right.
So this is an existing 16 by 20 garage.
Okay. And that will stay there?
That would stay there. All right, here's a gravel driveway, a stone driveway, and they'll extend that driveway into where the new garage would be built.
Okay.
And to the side of it. This would be just crushed stone. That was, wasn't a stipulation by the Conservation Commission, but it was strongly recommended.
For better infiltration of the water?
Yes, for better infiltration.
Because you're in, within 100 feet of the wetlands?
Yes, everything, bordering wetlands.
Bordering wetlands, okay. Okay.
I can't see.
All right. Okay, let me read records. I'm going to read letters into the record from other town boards, and then we'll have questions from the board, and then we'll go out to the public for any questions and Let me explain first, the building inspector gave me a call a little while ago, there's a fire down off of Route 18, and he was called in to, to be present at the, at the fire, so that's why he's not here tonight. From Whitman Fire Rescue and Emergency Services, at this time, Whitman Fire Rescue and Emergency Services had no objection to this proposal for a detached garage with apartment above, provided all applicable fire and building codes are met. Sincerely, Timothy Clancy, Jr., Chief of Department. From the planning board, at the November 14th, 2023 meeting, the board reviewed the plan for 250 Stetson Street. The planning board recommends approval of the requested variances. Adam Somerville, Chairman. From the Whitman Board of Health, Whitman Board of Health has no objection to the petition of Dennis and Terry Smith for a special permit from section 240-6.6, as the owner wishes to add an apartment above the detached garage for the property located on 250 Stetson Street. Town of Whitman, water sewer master file indicates this home is connected to municipal sewer and water. Just a question, I'll just ask a question before we go to the other members of the board. So this property is owned industrial, and any idea when the house was built?
I think somewhere around '62.
Okay.
'62 or '62.
So I'm going to assume it's, so it's non-conforming use then in that district? So I think what we should, you need, so he's asking for a special permit for an accessory apartment, but I think we probably also, we need something to address the fact that this is non-conforming use.
Mr. Chandler, also, there's very little frontage on Stetson Street, so that probably should be addressed too.
So it might, might be substandard for residential onset. So at, at the least, I think a finding, it's an existing, pre-existing non-conforming use, which is protected, but it's being expanded. So since it's residential, I'm, now it's supposed to come in your opinion too, I'm thinking a, just a finding is sufficient.
I think, yeah, because right now it's residential, not changing the use.
Yeah, but it's expanding the existing, it's non-conforming as to use, so it's expanding that, and it...
But the accessory structure is going to be out of requirements of the law, so...
Yeah, so the accessory structure is simply, that's the special permit for the accessory structure, but I think because the, the overall, I mean, if they was adding a floor to the house, we'd probably say that would need a finding for expansion of a non-conforming use. So I think it should, I think it should be both to sort of safeguard you from any questions down the road too about the zoning status, so that's what I'm going to suggest to the board. Okay, questions from members of the board, and I'll include, members of the board who are not sitting on the case can ask questions. Make comments, Mr. Keenan?
I have no comments.
Okay, Mr. Andrews?
Yeah, this is going to be a two-car garage on the block.
I think it's more like a car and a half on the bottom.
Yeah, there's a...
Sketch like that. And this, you said it's going to be for your daughter?
Yes, they'll find me above that before my daughter, that would probably store some of it.
You understand that any time it's not used by the daughter, it can't be used as a rental, it has to be owned, it has to be used by a family member.
I do.
And you're aware that you have to have all your connections through the main house.
I do, I'm aware of that.
That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Kim?
No comments.
Mr. Curran?
I have no questions. You have, well, I guess I do. You're going to dig up a brand-new foundation, is it going to be a basement or nothing, right? Just a garage for a slab?
Right, right.
Yeah, that's all I have. He's going to have to pull a permit, it would be a nice job.
Yeah. What about, I was counting on you to ask about fire separation and everything, since there's a garage on the...
Well, that, that's in the building code, but, well, the other comment is, I did look at the floor plan, he's going to need a second means of egress. Whereas this is a standalone, it's not connected to the existing house, a single means of egress doesn't work, so you need to have, I would suggest in the back, we put a slider with the deck, and then stairs down.
Definitely.
But you'll...
From the, from the second floor to get that? Okay.
That's going to be required, and Rob will make sure he does that, but just because it's a standalone structure, any living situation needs two means of egress.
Mr. Chairman, does a second, for you?
Yes.
Does a second set of stairs need to be covered where it's a new building?
The first set, there's one inside.
Right.
And the second would be just like a deck outside, so they have a slider to a deck to stairs.
Thank you.
And it's got to go to grade, just so you know, you know, all the way to the ground.
The stairs.
Yep. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chandler?
No, I have no questions at this time, thank you.
Mr. Blas?
Just one question. When I was looking at the stairs, so the stairs is enclosed inside the garage.
Yes.
And the, the access to the stairway is through the door on the front of the garage.
The person door.
Yeah. So at the second floor level, is there a, a second, like an entry door? Is there a landing with an entry door?
I haven't really thought about it.
This will need a firework top of stairs?
That's, that's where I was...
Stairwell, I didn't see it in the plan. Stairwell will have to be all 5/8 sheetrock, which is fire code, and the whole garage will have to be...
So that stairwell will have to be closed, correct?
Yes, and have an exterior 5/8 door.
That's, that's all I, that's all I have.
Okay, you know, I think we can, again, this is, that's, that's all fire code related stuff, but we like, in building code, we like to bring it up, and I think probably put in the decision that all building and fire code requirements ought to be met, and just let it go at that. So how, how are utilities going to be handled for this? I mean, your sewer and, and water and so forth?
I believe for, because of the bylaw, they have to share the services from the existing house, that's required with it, so the sewage would be put into a pump, and then pumped in up to the house.
Okay.
The water would come from the house, and saying that they, you know, it's split the electricity and bring it out underground.
Okay, okay. And that, so that all be on your lot and wouldn't be affect, wouldn't be any change in the connections?
No.
At the street? Okay.
You'll have to do a new electric service in your house, right? And then do a self-penalt drive?
Yes, I have to. So the electric's already been, hasn't disconnected at the meter, so I would split it at the meter, and then go through the, go through the basement and bring it out to the new
Okay, that's it. What is, what is the existing garage like, or is that...
It's a 16 by 20, and I currently have a couple motorcycles in it and just various, you know.
See, you don't...
You know, I'm, you know, several thousand dollars are wrapped up into that over the years, and I really don't want to lose it.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't, I mean, it's basically another storage unit, isn't it?
Kind of a shop in there.
Okay, all right. Okay, Mr. Andrews, I usually make, you know, do make the point of reminding an applicant that it can only be used for a relative, and if they leave, it can't be used simply as a rental unit. Also, when the property is sold, the new owner, if they want to continue to use it for in-law, have to come back to us and get a new special permit.
Can, can, so is that, is that forever, or is that, is there any kind of noted time on that?
No, the way the bylaw says, if they want to, you know, this is an unusual case of a special permit, normally when we issue a special permit, it runs with the property, it's forever, but the bylaw provides that a new owner has to come in and reapply to get the special permit or to renew it. And that's partly so the town, town knows what's going on, the new owner gets to come in, and we, you know, and we actually have one of those later tonight, just to make sure everybody's aware of what, what the rules are.
So there is a process to make it into?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's one.
A process for the new owner to follow, it's stated in the bylaw.
If there's not a process necessarily to turn it into an apartment, that requires...
They'd have to come in, yeah.
A whole other zone or a whole other, yeah, appeal.
Right, so you'd be a whole other...
Right, to convert it to two-family would be whatever the provisions are, you know, in your case, property in industrial zone, need a variance, so forth. So, now, I don't, the thing about putting the second egress on the back of the garage, just kind of note here, there's wetlands, I'm just thinking in terms of any impact on any neighbors of, of having that, because at that point, this no longer looks like just a garage that happens to have living space above it, but you don't, there's nobody behind you, right? It's wetlands behind you, and, well, I guess there is a, four, I guess four Constitution Circle is behind you, but it's a...
Kind of over into the corner.
Yeah, yeah.
Where that is pointed.
Considerable, considerable distance.
The other side of the lot.
Yeah, yeah. A long way anyway from, from where you're going to be. Okay, I don't have anything further, questions and comments from the public? Anyone, do you wish to speak? Yeah, give us your name and address?
Brian LaPierre, 73 Joyce Terrace. I'm coming here, I'm the vice chair of the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
And this project had come in front of the commission, and we had voted for it, and we approved the order conditions, but I was just, just here to make sure nothing changed.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, yes, thank you for coming. And I mean, and just, so just to clarify, the property, the construction itself is not in wetlands, but it's within 100 feet of wetlands, and therefore it's subject to the jurisdiction?
Yeah, it's pretty close, the whole property for the 100-foot buffer, including the main house, but we're, we're really intent on trying to stay out of the 25-foot area, like the main house on Drive, but before that, so.
Okay.
And I think we can accomplish that, we revised the plan through one continuance.
Okay.
But I think, I think we had to put some protective measures in for construction to keep things out of the resource area, and then, you know, we should be in good shape.
Okay, so you had, you had asked earlier, you know, which, which do you go to first? And I said, well, normally people come to the zoning, but this is a good example of where it was wise to go to the Conservation Commission, because some of the details of this plan changed, basically Conservation Commission did, so it made, made sense to go there first.
And I believe that plan is what was presented to your, your board, and they probably can't...
Yeah, yeah.
The, you know, it shows whether the boarding, the wetlands is, and...
Right.
So it didn't get any variances, right? There's no variance.
For us, I, I think just the, except the special permit, which is 6.6, for the accessory apartment, and a finding that it's, even though it's a non-conforming use, this is not significantly more detrimental than the existing use, and possibly, it may, it may also be non-conforming as to frontage, not sure, but if so...
150 feet, right? 150 feet of frontage.
Do you know what you have for frontage?
150 is...
Oh, well, that should be...
...a power line.
Oh. Well, front, your frontage on Stetson Street looks like it's...
About 45 feet, maybe?
Good bet.
Let's see, I'm going to look, Stetson Streets...
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. That's what, that's the neighbor's, that's the neighbor's lot.
So your frontage is sort of at the upper corner of your lot, is that...
No, bottom down here, John.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I was looking there. Okay.
John, oops.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So, right here, this is, it might, I don't know why this shows these jogs, it's, it's a rectangle, but this is, this is the lot. Here's Stetson Street?
Yeah.
So he's, and this is, so he's basically just pointing on Stetson Street.
Yeah, so...
Just that, okay.
So, well, that's not true, because the road ends here. Still from here.
It's like this, okay, and that's she, okay. Oh, so it's down, down at the bottom of the plan, right?
Actually, I think horizontally, see this line here?
Yeah.
That's, that's the edge of the block.
Okay, but I think, yeah. All right, so yeah, it probably is, well, if that's, so Stetson Street actually narrows a little there as it comes to your lot?
That's, yeah, because the, after when I had the survey, my, my corner is, is in the road.
So it might, it might be 450 feet, probably less than that, so...
It's right up here.
So it, it's certainly substandard, so...
It's coming down.
Again, I, I think a finding would be both from the use and from the lot requirements.
And here too. So before this was all, it didn't, didn't matter, yeah.
Okay, thanks, S. Okay, anything else, anyone? Okay, yes, Mr. Chandler?
Point, I do notice there's a shed that seems to straddle the property line.
Where is...
If you look on the other side of the sheet from where you are.
Is that yours?
Right up the... Further up towards the property line? And then down towards...
In the back, up here.
Yeah, that's the top, right. Five by seven, or seven, six by seven? Yes.
So how is it, yeah, is it just sitting on the ground?
It's elevated on blocks, and, you know, there's a big wall around this corner, but it's elevated, it's on a deck, a pressure-peated deck, nine by nine, I think, pressure-peated deck, and it's a series, metal cheddar. Okay. And you realize what that, you know, when I put it there, it was only until this year when I had, I had the property surveyed, that I found that out. Would that affect our findings?
I, I don't think it affects us, I think, you know, and Mr. Curran might give you advice, but say, before you sell a property, you'd want to move it off of...
Yeah, it won't be replaced, it's a metal shed, and it has a limited lifetime.
Okay.
Pretty much, you know, with, with the additional storage in the garage, it really won't be, I mean, I need it for a while, but not forever.
Would that have needed a building permit when it went up? No, too small for that?
No, in fact, it might disturb the wetlands if he takes it out, probably just let it brawl away.
Yeah.
We did mention that during our, during our conversation. So it's pretty well established, it's elevated out, but it is very close to the resource area, cannot move it in there. There is a cargo container that Mr. Smith does have behind the, where the apartment's going to go, that was part of our order conditions to remove that following the work. So that will be removed, and the baser will be removed, there's a second structure, there's a temporary structure. But we, as a commission, we looked, the shed is pretty well established, it's elevated out of the wetlands, obviously. I think it'd be more damaging if we moved it out.
Okay, but, but say, if he ever wanted to replace anything out there, he's going to have to go to the Conservation Commission.
Treaties, anything to, depending on...
Right, okay. But I think, I think we can, I don't think we need to address it.
I just want to be cautious.
No, no, thank you, thank you for bringing it up. All right, I'm going, if there's nothing further, I'll close the hearing. So what's being requested is a special permit for an accessory struck, accessory apartment, in-law apartment, above a garage that's to be constructed, and a finding that the expansion of this residential use in industrial zone on a lot that doesn't meet all dimensional requirements is not substantially more detrimental than the existing use. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to that effect by Mr. Blas, second. Mr. Chandler, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, you're all set, thank you, thank you. Since we have a couple minutes before the next case, I'm going to pause the meeting so I can go get a drink of water. Okay, we're back in session. So I'll call the next case to order. This is case number 19, location of property, 74 Franklin Street. Type of district, single residence, A2. Type of structure, demolish, two-family, and construct a side-by-side duplex. Owner's name, 74 Franklin Street Realty Partners LLC, Manuel Ramos, manager. Owner's address, 97 Oak Street, Brockton. When did you acquire this property? August 9th, 2023. His application been filed with town clerk, yes. Has any previous appeal been made? Yes. Section of bylaw of which relief is requested, 240-5.488. This case was advertised in the Whitman Hansen Express on November 22nd and November 30th. Sitting on the case will be Mr. Andrews, Mr. Curran, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Blas, and myself, John Goldrosen. This time we'll have the reading of the list of abuttes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Northman, some of the persons who waived the reading of the list.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor? Okay, all right.
John, can you repeat the, the relief request?
Yeah, 240-5.488, that's the section that they're citing, and...
That's the section for what?
That's the section that's being cited, my understanding it's for a special permit, and I guess we'll have, we'll have further explanation of what's being done, but the, it doesn't say on the application, but the, the request is for a special permit under section 240-5.488. Okay, anyone who's here on this case, would you please raise your right hand and take an oath so you can participate? Do you solemnly swear the evidence in this matter shall be truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay. Whoever's presenting the case, would you give us your name for the record and explain what's, what's being proposed?
Good evening, board members, my name is Jack Silverstein, I'm a attorney on the Brockton, I have my office in Brockton. I represent Manuel Ramos, the manager of 74 Franklin Street Realty Partners. Mr. Ramos did purchase this on August 9th, 2023.
Mr. Ramos did purchase this on August ninth, twenty twenty-three. The existing property itself, before demolished, was a existing two-family, there was an up-and-down structure. It was declared inhabitable, could not be rebuilt. So after Mr. Ramos purchased it, he.
Excuse me, folks, please, we need to have it quiet so I can hear everything, go ahead.
He obtained the demolition permit, the structure itself is demolished. Now he would like to construct a side-by-side duplex. He couldn't, Mr. Ramos could not imitate the prior structure, because Mr. Ramos prefers to go with a side-by-side structure as opposed to an up-and-down. So we're presenting to you for the special permit for the construction of said dwelling.
Give me a minute, because I do want to look up the relief that's sought here.
Under subsection eight?
Right, so subsection eight, and this is in the Residence, Residence A2.
Page ninety.
Yeah, I got it here, Residence A2, so special permit, detached dwelling on a separate lot occupied by not more than two families, and having a lot size with a minimum of twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet.
This lot's not that small.
It's, all right, so it's a non-conforming as to size. So it would need, it would need a variance from the minimum lot size requirement.
What's the size of the lot?
Yeah, what is?
Twenty thousand?
About twenty thousand three hundred fifty-eight.
So slightly, couple thousand square feet under.
Two thousand one hundred forty-two.
Okay. And I don't. I guess I'm trying to think whether it would be a finding, since it's a residential.
Can I ask a few questions?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead, Mr. Curran? And let me just say, the building inspector did say there were some questions about the zoning status, and he was sorry he couldn't be here because of the, having to be called away.
Did you get a permit to build a two-family?
I went to the building department, I spoke to their building commission, and I asked them all the, you know, the requirements to put a two-family existing, the structure's pretty bad. So he says the best way is to general that place, because, you know, he couldn't even get in, you know, to build it, so.
So you haven't gone to him for a permit yet?
I didn't go for, for the other permit, because he says.
Did you go through the file, your file on that property?
Yeah, I also.
Years ago was approved to convert, to rebuild it as a two, provided it had the appearance of a single-family home?
So he, the building inspector told me, he showed me, he says, hey, this thing was approved, but I'm going to send you to the board, because I don't make it.
That's expired.
He says expired, he says, but it was approved for two, to rebuild, you know, two-family. He says just to come to the board, just in case.
Yeah, so I think we should start off, John, is that this was, did go to the board, it was when I was the building commissioner, and it was approved for a two-family, to tear down what was there and rebuild the two-family for the owner at that time. And the condition was, one of the conditions was it had to have the appearance of a single-family home.
Okay.
That's what was there, it was just a colonial with, with two units.
Okay.
So there was a downstairs, and I think the owner's brother lived there, and the owner lived upstairs, but.
And, and that would not have needed a variance, because that would have come under subsection seven. Well, maybe, or maybe not, it's, which conversion to a.
Well, that one?
Yeah, it wouldn't have really come under seven either.
That was prior to zoning, it was a two-family.
Right.
So, so they just wanted to tear it down because it was in such bad shape and rebuild it. But now the neighbors have been dealing with that property for years, and it's been, well, I don't know how you go along with it, but. There was a lot of people trying to buy that property.
He did work on the neighborhood. I did, that's how, he was the inspector of the blue house, the guy caught a fire, he didn't work there.
And you found the owner.
How long ago was it that we approved that special?
At least fifteen years ago.
Okay, and it was just never exercised, it expired?
And we, in fact, we, we went to the attorney general under the abandoned housing initiative, and they were trying to push him to get something done, and we, they did board it up, but.
So how many years is it, so it's not used for many years?
Oh, it's been ten.
Okay.
It's pretty bad.
The first floor, fourth floor had collapsed into the basement.
But a point of clarification, are you asking for a conventional two-family, meaning one owner with occupied and then a rental? Are you asking for a joint, a single-family, a joint house, I mean, each with separate owners?
I'm asking for a side-by-side duplex, which is.
No, no, two owners or one owner?
Could be two owners, so.
Okay, those are two completely different things.
Well, not, not.
It's still a two-family.
Still a two-family, form of ownership isn't anything we really have, doesn't matter whether it's rented or sold off.
Right, but if.
I mean, it's not going to be an in-law, that's a.
It's two separate owners.
Yeah.
It's, it's attached, so if, yeah, it's attached.
It's a simple, simple, blue plate.
It's still, it's still a two-family, huh?
The, well, I think.
It's a condo, you know, if, if that's how he does it.
Right, as opposed to a, a dwelling that has two, aren't there, aren't there significant fire in the state building code between a two-family and?
No, this is going to be built the same either way.
It's going to be built same either way.
Yeah, it's still considered a two-family. For a condo, then you get into stuff with the basement, so that each one has their own space in the attic and all that. But that's all just the way that the sale, sellability, it's got nothing to do with this. Yeah, and I, I personally don't like to resign, but.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, then let me read some letters into record from the town boards, and then we'll go to questions from members of the board, and then we'll go out to the public for your comments. Please, it's got to be quiet so that first that we get the recording correct, and so everybody here can, can hear what's going on. We'll go out to the public for your comments and questions. Whitman Fire Rescue Emergency Services at this time wire. Whitman Fire Rescue Emergency Services has no objection to this proposal for a new side-by-side duplex, provided all applicable fire and building codes are met. Sincerely, Timothy Clancy, Chief of Department. From Whitman Planning Board, at the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, the board reviewed the plan for seventy-four Franklin Street. The planning board recommends denial of the requested variances. Adam Somerville, Chairman. From the Board of Health, the Whitman Board of Health gives conditional approval for Manuel Ramos, seventy-four Franklin Street Realty Partners LLC, for a special permit from section two forty dash five point four eight eight, as the applicant wishes to demolish the existing two-family dwelling and construct a side-by-side duplex for the property located at seventy-four Franklin Street. Owner must receive permission from the Whitman DPW to connect these dwellings to the town's municipal sewer system in order for the Board of Health to grant final approval. DPW records indicate this property is connected to town water only. Sincerely, Dan Kelly, Health Agent. Okay, questions and comments from members of the board, Mr. Keeman?
The only question I have, was there a plot plan that showed where this lot sits on the, on the property?
But shown in blue on, on this plan is the, the building, okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. What are the side setbacks here? And this one, understand whether the building meets the. Okay, so this is Residence A2.
So fifteen-foot side?
Fifteen-foot side, it's got about twenty-three feet on one side, I guess both sides, okay. And fifty-foot front setback, and only needs thirty. So it's got all the forty-two, it's got forty-two feet for back, so it meets all the setback requirements. But I'll just note where it's an undersized lot, we could still take that into consideration. Okay, anything else, Keeman?
I thought, I thought A2 was seventeen-five.
Yeah, but it were two families.
Yeah, it's eighteen thousand, but for the special permit under A8, it has to be twenty-two-five.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, anything else, Mr. Keeman?
No.
Okay, Mr. Andrews? Mr. Kimball?
They want to say I have a, a single-family area, and what the proposal looks like a duplex two-family. To me, it should be, looks like one family.
Yes. What are the, can you give us the, talk a little bit about the buildings, the dimensions? How many rooms are on the first floor, number of bedrooms and so forth for each unit? I know you presented the plans, but just to get it on the record.
First floor, kitchen and living room, second floor, three-bedroom, a bathroom, a laundry for each unit.
The basement is, if you, if I can describe it as a half-basement, it's, it starts at the back of the garage, it goes to the rear of the house, the basement does not go under the garage itself. So it's, if you can be describing it as a half-basement, then there's the unfinished attic.
Okay.
We calculated, each floor's about thirteen, twenty square feet, a thousand three hundred and twenty total, twenty-six forty about the basement.
Okay, and the width of the, the length of the building is?
Sixty feet wide.
Yeah, sixty.
Sixty-two-five?
Sixty feet wide, fifty-eight and a half feet.
All right.
He, he tried to design, Mr. Ramos tried to design the asset as a one structure, similar to what it was.
Well, I mean, what, what were the dimensions of the structure that was torn down, the footprint?
It has, you know, Paul Fanny said, it shows the existing, can't see it on that.
Yeah, I can't see it too well, but.
Showing that it existed.
I'm just guessing that it was significantly less, so.
Yeah, because it was, it was one about each other.
So it's, let me see here. So, no bathroom, on the first floor, garage, each one has a garage, living, family area, kitchen, deck. And probably like a half-bath on the first floor, I'm thinking. And the second floor is three bedrooms with two, two full baths, right? And then is there? And is it, is the attic storage space, or what's in the?
It's the attic, it's all mechanical.
Okay, all right. All right, and yeah, I see the basement, if you go to, it's S1, it's maybe the fourth or fifth page in, you see sort of a side view, section A8, that shows the basement. And is it, is the basement going to be unfinished, or what? Un, okay, all right. Anything, Mr. Kimball, anything more?
No, it's just that on the basement, is there access from the other main floor to the basement?
There's a, the stairs from the first floor to, to the basement is not degressed, from the side of the.
One second.
Okay, Mr. Curran?
I have an issue with where it was from the front. I kind of would like to hear what the neighbors divide say, and they kind of live right behind it, next to it, so. I know a whole lot to listen.
All right, Mr. Blas, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chandler?
I have nothing at this time, so I haven't done it.
Mr. Blas?
My sentiments are with Mr. Curran, I'd like to hear what the neighbors, neighbors have to say.
And I too.
It looks like a firehouse, that's what I first thought when I looked at it.
I don't think they've seen this, so I think they ought to have a method to cut down on it.
Yeah, it's, the idea of a duplex, I don't have a concern with that. We have, but we have a lot in town that are, you know, two-story duplexes with just, just the residential structure and a driveway on each side. And that seems to work fine for people, and that's, this to me is really overwhelming. And with two big garages, are each, are they two-story, two-car garages or just one?
So that's all.
Two, two, you know, that's, yeah. That would, that would serve well for replacement for our firehouse. And I think it's just overwhelming to have something that large on, given the width of the lot. Yes, it meets the setback requirements, but, you know, we, this nonetheless needs a special permit, it needs a variance because of the undersized lot, and I'm, you know, in addition to the garage, there's additional driveway space on each side for additional parking that's being proposed here, so that extends closer to the lot lines. I just, I just think it's much larger units than, than what is necessary here. So, anything further from the board, I'm going to go out to the public and see their comments. Okay, anyone who wishes to speak on this, would you raise your hand, give us your name and address and your comments? Yes, ma'am?
I'm in from many, many eighty-four Franklin Street.
Are you the immediate abutter, or?
Actually, I had a contract to buy this property, and the attorney sold it up for one year.
Well.
That's another story.
That's right.
Okay.
But do you live right next door?
Next door.
Okay, thank you.
Near the farmhouse.
Okay.
Near the farmhouse.
Okay.
A lot with this, there's a lot. The construction that went on and the cutting of the trees was done fence-to-fence. It was no survey, the property was not flagged properly. The fences on my property are two to four feet off of the property line. Trees were cut off, down out of my property, no property flags anywhere on the property. My mom called me one day and told me to come home, because my dad was tying himself to a tree. Because they were cutting down another tree, cutting down more trees on my property. So there's that issue, the issue of them working at odd hours, starting at six-thirty in the morning on weekends. And this is the first time I'm seeing the plan. I don't even like it. I don't know what more to say about it, but I, that's, this isn't, because we, like I said, we have a contract to buy it, and this definitely isn't what we were looking at, putting on the property.
Okay.
Because we were either going to increase our property, or we were going to take some of ours, we have two acres, and we're zone A1. So we were going to maybe take some of our property and make it a nice two-family that looked residential.
Okay, all right, anyone else wish to speak on this?
Do you know, you were good too.
Yeah, give us your name and address.
Robert, you're good, eighty-four Franklin Street. We were in front of board for the door apartment with the guy, and I appreciate being in our apartment, it's beautiful. They worked on Sundays, the guys cutting the tree, I went up there, I had a plot plan, I showed them what we did, and I measured and showed them, they still cut the trees down. He came over on Saturday morning, Mr. Manning, and imposed himself as a cleanup person, and he wanted to know if we had any complaints, he's going to clean the property up. And then as the morning went on, he finally said he was a builder. And he said he was going to do this for us and do that for us, for us our best, but I mean, there was no consideration, especially with the tree company. They were going to stay, and my daughter came home, and she was, I said, she's five minutes away, they threw the stuff on the truck, get the hell out of there.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me just go back to members of the board, because some of you had once withheld your comments pending. comments pending, Mr. Curran?
I don't really have a problem with a two-family being there, that prior to this, it was approved to be one, but needed to maintain the appearance of a single family. Um, I think that this board would compromise, you need to go back to the darn board.
Yeah, that, that's no problem, that's no problem. But, you know, you know, things, I went to the building inspector prior to do everything. He got me into this, he says, okay, so I asked him, I pull up permit for the demo, I went through all the procedures that, you know, we had to do to go, maybe approach the, you know, you know, to tell him that was going to do it. But problem, the tree guy, he went ahead of me, he, I'm cutting-
So the tree guy made some mistakes?
Yeah, he made a mistake, but I present myself to the, to him.
Yeah, so, um, maybe you can make it up to them somehow, but-
Well, I, I'd suggest-
This is not, you know, I mean, it's a lot of two-family, if you want me to change to, to do it.
You need to make it look like more like a single family.
Yeah, I mean, again, you can go around town, there's plenty, plenty of duplex-
If you want to buy the place, I'll sell it to you today, you know, it's no problem.
Right.
You know, I mean, you just went, you know, to build it like everybody-
No, I think this town is, is looking forward to having that property in, on tax rolls again. Um, and what was there was a mess for a lot of years, so.
Pull up permit, we did everything.
Yeah.
If she wants to buy it, welcome, I'll sell it to you today.
Yeah, Mr. Chandler, my, my suggestion is we continue this and come back with something that-
Yeah, I think, let's, let's continue it, I think you understand what, again, there's plenty of side-by-side duplexes in town that you can, you can see what we have in mind, I, I guess-
A lot less industrial, more residential.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, there's a couple on South Bath that are, um, you'll find them-
Yeah, I'm thinking, and I'm thinking there's ones, the ones on Warren Ave, I'm thinking of like up behind the mobile, but-
Noslow Terrace off of Auburn-
Nos, yeah, even that, I mean, um, that's true, the houses on Noslow Terrace off of, um-
Route fourteen.
Route fourteen, Auburn Street, actually do have any, do have a garage, but they're like, you know, attached, so it's just not as overwhelming.
It's a two-family, so we don't have, it doesn't require all the, you know, just pull up permit.
No, no, you still need the special permit for a two-family. And a variance because it's under it, it's under twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet. So you, you still need the same relief.
Yeah, we're just looking for a different looking dwell.
Yeah, I mean, you could do a single, you could do a single family without any further permits.
The single families might even work, you know, because you can-
Yeah, and so, so think about that, and I would also say based on, you know, what the neighbors, and I will go back, Keenan, um, think about what, how you might landscape the lot, when you're done to, uh, make it less intrusive to the neighbors too. Uh, yes, ma'am? You're good.
Um, April Maydell, eighty-four Franklin Street. So, I don't have, I just have a sour, very sour taste in my mouth over this whole issue.
Uh, I understand.
But I don't have an issue with, you know, a two-family going in there or anything like that. What I was told is that there was a slight retaining wall, and I was told, my husband was told, or my dad was told by Mr. Ramos, that he would fix that retaining wall, and he was going to be putting up a, um, vinyl fence. Now, if that's what's going to be happening, I would expect that retaining wall to be extended almost into his property, because if that vinyl fence is going up, and that's going to be his, and I would almost want it in-
I, I think you should be sure you're here when we continue this-
Yeah.
And then bring that stuff up, because until they have the final dimensions, we have-
Okay, perfect.
And, uh, and obviously, any fencing that they put up has to be on their property.
Right.
Okay. Where, where is the retaining wall and the-
I don't, I don't, what is the retaining? Another fence, let's see.
It's only, it's only a couple of feet. It's only a small-
But which, which side of the, on, on your side of the property or?
Oh, okay, that's fine.
It's right here.
Okay.
It's, well, it's actually probably a couple of feet off of the, um, line.
All right, well, if it's on your property, it's not.
But he said he was going to fix it up and move it, and then put the fence on it.
Well, not if it's on your property, you don't want, you don't want him doing something on your property.
Well, where he-
We won't make you part of our-
Took down our trees.
Yeah, yeah, I mean-
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, our next, we have a, on January twenty-second, we've scheduled the case, has that already been scheduled for seven? Okay. That's a lot we'll go on the way. So that's the, uh, H-70 Temple Street, they're coming back with a different plan.
Is it on the way?
Sixteen.
Yeah. Yeah. Um-
No, the tax, do you all let theirs?
No.
No, no, the, the one near, um-
Swanson, where you call from, Chazaboo.
Sportsman Street.
Near Sportsman Street, yeah. Yeah, so-
John, I'm going away the fifteenth February for a month, I'd like to be part of this case.
Yeah. So, I mean, I can put it on that night, but we'll put it on like at eight o'clock, is that, okay? All right.
When's that case?
January twenty-second, right? Is that the right date?
I think so.
Let me just double check. Yeah, because the fifteenth is Martin Luther King Day.
Yeah, it's the next week.
You want to?
Yeah.
I'm crazy.
Yeah, it's, it's the, the twenty-second. So I, uh, if that, that works for you, okay. If that give you enough time to come up with a different plan, like, you know, we can make it longer if you needed more time, but-
No, no.
Okay, all right.
Eight o'clock?
I'll, yeah, and then eight o'clock, and I just understand there's a case starting at seven, which could be controversial, might, might run a little late, but I'm hoping to get to them. Yeah. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to continue this hearing to Monday, January twenty-second at eight P.M. Motion by Mr. Chandler, second, by Mr. Andrews, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, five oh. So you will not get another mailed notice or anything, so just take, make a note of that, just come out.
Chairman, I just want to add to the, to the, add to the minutes, um, that as far as the board, uh, is concerned, we have additional, our associate members are, are here and hearing testimony tonight.
Right, right, yes, yes. In ca-, in case we have, uh, someone who's absent that night, the associate members have been here and could sit on the case, so we'll still have five members, but I, I think we're all expecting to be here then. Okay, okay, thank you very much.
And now the secretary did a great job.
Thank you.
The first list, the tiny now.
But, oh, I thought you were, well-
I haven't sent it in yet.
Oh, no, really, no.
I know, I kept everything typed up in it.
That's it.
No, this is only gestures.
This is two fifty, Stetson.
Two fifty, seven.
Here we go.
Yeah. This one?
I'm sorry. You can move right on up if you'd like. You're, you're the applicant, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Six four five.
I will call this case to order. This is case number twenty. Location of property, six forty-five Plymouth Street. Type of district, residential, doesn't say which, which district.
Is, so that one.
Yeah, right off the road.
C fifty-eight, so that's A1.
Okay, residence A1. Type of structure, existing, uh, proposed, i- it's an existing in-law accessory apartment. Owner's name, Catherine Diaz and Jelissa Diaz. Owner's address, six forty-five Plymouth Street. When did you acquire this property? December twenty nineteen. Uh, has any previous appeal been made? Not under current owner, but, um, I can explain to the board, this was previously approved for an in-law apartment to a previous owner. Section of bylaw which relief is requested, section two forty-six point six, uh, in-law accessory apartment requesting special permit under a new owner. This case was advertised in the, uh, Whitman Hansen Express on November twenty-second and November thirtieth, oh, did we, uh, we have a copy of the plans, is that, I know it was submitted.
Is it like this?
Oh, is this the, uh, oh, here we go. Sorry, folks, here we go.
John, correction, it's on A2.
A2, okay. Uh, anyway, this case was advertised in the Whitman Hansen Express on November twenty-second and November thirtieth. Sitting on the case will be Mr. Andrews, Mr. Curran, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Blaz, and myself, John Goldwell. So this time we have the reading of the list of abutters unless I hear a motion to waive the reading.
Mr. Chairman, through the apparent lack of interest on the part of the abutters, I, um, move that we wait to read the list of abutters.
Move, motion by Mr. Blaz, second, by Mr. Andrews, all in favor? Okay. Um, would you raise your right hand, all of you, and take it out? Do you solemnly swear the evidence you shall given this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay.
What did you do?
So, just to, I just want to explain to people-
I ripped my nail off completely.
Oh, left hand would have done. Uh, I just want to explain to the board before we started, um, so this was approved, and I, I don't have the, uh, copy of the decision, but it was approved like twenty years ago, it was an in-law apartment. They bought it and just want to continue the use, as they all explain, without any changes. So, when I heard that and I talked to the building inspector and the town clerk, I said, look, if you just submit the plan that we saw at that time, as long as there's no exterior, uh, changes, I think the board will be satisfied with that, rather than spending a lot of money to show that it looks just the way it did. Um, having said that, this is a matter for, for another time, but I want to put on the agenda at some point, how we handle, uh, the special permit for accessory apartment when there's a new owner, because the bylaw is actually ambiguous. We've kind of understood that the old permit ends and you kind of reapply for a new special permit. The bylaw kind of says two different things. It says it terminates, and then it says a new owner can apply to renew the special permit, which maybe means it doesn't need a whole hearing and reapplication? It's not clear. But we should have a discussion, and, and Rob, you know, we, I discussed with, with Robert, we need to have a discussion another time about how to handle these, because we're certainly going to get more of these in the future, so we, we need to figure that out. But I just wanted to explain, before the applicant stands up, why she's submitting a twenty-year-old plan. It's because I said-
I think it's fine.
I said that's good enough, but I just want-
Our plan is a buffer.
Yeah. Okay, having said all that, would you, whoever's going to present this, would you introduce yourself, uh, give us your name and explain what you want to do?
Um, hi, Catherine Diaz, Catherine Diaz. Um, we're, uh, reapplying for, to renew a special permit. The existing in-law there hasn't changed at all, nothing's been added to it, it's still the same as we purchased back in December twenty nineteen. I'm just trying to renovate the kitchen in the in-law. So when the contractor wanted to submit for a building permit, that's when we found out that we had to go through this per, uh, this process to get a special permit, because a special permit was under the previous owner, and, um, we have to have a special permit under our name now. But that's, that's all we're trying to do here.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
And who, who is going to, who lives in the main house and who's going to live in the in-law apartment?
Uh, the main house.
I live in the main house.
My parents and my brothers live in the main house, and I live in the in-law.
Okay, all right. And I'm just, this is more curiosity and for education of the board, when you bought the house, what were you told by the realtor, whoever you bought it from, as to how it could be used or what it could be used?
Who was your realtor?
Uh, our realtor was Jenny Quilton.
Hmm, I'm just curious.
Um, we didn't really, we just, we assumed it was a two-family home, that's it. Um, we really didn't discuss anything further, other than it was a two-family home. But once we started signing the papers, there was some ambiguity in the fact that it was listed as a single family, but it was a two-family, and, yeah, I didn't really, we didn't really think much into it, other than-
Just feels-
Yeah, we were just purchasing a two-family home where I lived.
So it was listed as a two-family?
Yeah, it was listed as a two-family.
Your assessors, please, sure.
Oh, yeah.
That's not right, I don't think.
Yeah, yeah, I ask, just because, again, that gets into the issue of-
And when we, yeah, when I go on to the public records equipment, it says, uh, two-family resident.
In the, in the assessor's records, yeah.
Yeah, the assessor's, yeah, so.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, a problem is, is that they're probably, and you've owned the house for four years, and the only reason you know it was an issue was because you went to get a building permit.
Yeah.
If you hadn't needed a building permit, if you hadn't renovated the kitchen-
Yeah.
This wouldn't even come up.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that there are plenty like that, because, you know, from the point of view of, uh, when people buy a house, and let's say an attorney, it, did you have an attorney when you were buying the house representing you?
Yeah, I did, I was a attorney, yeah.
And did he, what did he say?
He didn't say anything.
Yeah.
It was just a two-family, like, we didn't, I, we had no idea there was a special-
Did, did he say anything that there was a special permit on it or any?
No, I, I think we would have known at the time.
How many electrical meters?
Excuse me?
How many electric meters?
Electrical meters.
Is it just, is it, is it just one bill for the whole house?
Oh, yeah.
That's it, Keenan, that's how you know right there.
Yeah.
Because if it's two-family, you've got it.
Yeah, but I think even, you know, attorneys who look at, i- if, if an attorney's hired by the mortgage company, say, to look at the title and make sure things are okay, the, at best, they're going to see, ah, the house has a special permit, it was approved. They're not going to look at it, even if they, even if they look and say, special permit for an in-law, they're not going to read all the way to the end where it says, it expires and you got to go back and get it renewed. So, it's a real kind of flaw, yeah, flaw in the whole process, we're kind of going on trust in a way that it's, it's going to work okay, but, see that, I just, I just, like I said, that was more for Rob, to have a fit to understand what you went through when you, when you bought the house.
Yeah, we had no idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, let me go to questions, members of the board. Mr. Keenan?
I think the only other downfall of the whole system is that we have an in-law apartment that town now calls a two-family, and it's listed as a two-family, so if you're buying what you thought was a two-family, then you can't have it as a two-family.
Right, right.
It shouldn't be listed as a two-family.
Yeah, because, because you understand, you cannot rent it out to somebody other than a family member.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You probably paid a lot extra because you think it's a two-family, and makes it work a lot.
When, when you bought it, were you thinking of renting it out, or was it always, it was always just going to be for-
Yeah, strictly family, yeah. Yeah, we just bought it.
A fortunate accident.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it just happened, uh, it was no space for all of us, but yeah, just the family.
Okay, anything else to, you know, Mr. Andrews?
No question.
Mr. Kimball?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Curran?
No questions.
Squaws?
Welcome to Whitman.
So just, again, to clarify, how, how much parking, how many parking spaces do So just, again, to clarify, how much parking, how many parking spaces do you have?
Six, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, quite a bit.
And the garage as well, too.
What's that?
And then the garage, inside the garage, there's those spaces.
Okay, and what's, what's the in-law apartment, was that constructed when we approved the in-law apartment? Did they build that as an addition to be the in-law apartment, do you know?
Yeah, it was.
It was, okay. That's what I thought. Yeah, I don't have any, any questions, you know, it's just the process we go through so that ideally, a new owner doesn't come in thinking that, you know, that it's a two-family, so we get the chance to say to you, now, if, you know, family members move out or something, you cannot treat it as a two-family and rent it to some outsider, at that point, you either, you know, you have to use it as a one-family essentially. And a new owner, if you sell it, the new owner is supposed to come in and ask us permission to continue to use it as a, as a in-law apartment, so, you know, it was all, it's set up that way because the town doesn't want these properties, single family, to turn into two-families. We want them, an in-law apartment to retain the appearance of a single-family house, but at the same time, we wanted, the town, I think strongly wanted to accommodate this situation of family members being able to share a property and be able to afford something they might not afford otherwise, so, and we've had quite a few of them, so I think it's been a good thing, but the administration of it gets, gets a little complicated.
Question, your driveway's right in the rotary, right?
Yes, yes.
Is that a problem?
I was gonna say, living on the rotary is kinda nice, you get different, I mean, we've seen accidents, I mean, trucks gone into our bushes, like, yeah, big edges that knocked it down.
I just can't imagine putting a rotary right there where people's driveways are inside the rotary.
It's like the Lions Lane originally, that road came into the rotary.
Right. Did we consider all that when we approved the, because I don't know, I don't know what the original configuration of the driveway was, whether the driveway to your house was already there when they came in for the in-law or not, I don't know.
Definitely something we'll have to visit and know.
But you got enough room to turn around so you don't have to back out onto the property?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, alright, anything further from the board? So, we'll just approve it as a special permit for the in-law apartment under six point six. Is there a motion, motion by Mr. Chandler, second, by Mr. Blas, any further discussion? All in favor? Five-oh, thank you, thanks for going through the process.
I have to record this decision at the register.
Yeah, 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 the decision should be recorded.
Pay attention to it, because it's not approved, but if you don't record it, it's no good.
It's not good, okay.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think the building inspector will give you the permit until it gets, you have to wait twenty days in case somebody appeals.
Oh, I have to wait twenty days for it to work, then I get the?
Yeah, he can explain it, yeah, just because we had for it to be, and then I think that sheet explains, there's an appeal period, so if somebody wanted to appeal it, so you can't, once that happens, you get confirmation from the town clerk that nobody has appealed it, and it'll take us a week or so to write the decision, submit it to the town clerk, and then it'll be twenty days from then.
So it's probably gonna be the end.
Just waiting to approve.
You want for the drug side, there, you get a copy of the decision and record that for three days.
And the building inspector can, can explain all that, dear.
Just don't forget to do that, I don't know why you're wasting.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, good night, thank you. Alright, we have some minutes to approve. Let's see, we'll take the minutes for case number sixteen, which was the, the final hearing for seven sixty-nine Bedford Street, the marijuana operation.
Well, I got two, all, all of chair notes.
That's it?
And I got two sixteen's.
You didn't get one?
Here we go. Charles, go.
Double seventeens.
It's a six and.
Excellent, thank you.
Right, sitting on this were... Myself, Wayne, oh, did you, let's see.
I stacked, but I mean, you didn't vote.
Right, because you, you would miss the first hearing.
Yeah, I just wanted to see.
So it's myself, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Curran, Mr. Keeman, and Mr. Kimball were sitting on this one.
I make the motion?
Motion by Mr. Curran to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr., uh, Mr. Keeman, all in favor? Okay, alright, approved. Case number seventeen, which was seventy-five Vincent Street Extension, the shed at the back of the lot, so this was myself, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Blas, Mr. Chandler, and Mr. Kimball.
Motion is approved.
Motion to approve by Mr. Chandler, is a second, second by Mr. Andrews, all in favor? Okay, five-oh on that one. And finally, the general minutes for November twenty-seventh. Move, motion by Mr. Blas to approve, second, second by Mr. Andrews, all in favor? Alright, so, our next meeting is January twenty-second, we have, it's six seventy Temple, whatever that address was, the property near Sportsman's Street.
Eight-seventy.
Eight-seventy, where we gave them, there was a lot of opposition, we gave them, we drove without touches.
That's the one that we're gonna build a five or six buildings.
Yeah, yeah, so they're gonna come back with something more, I think, like a.
Electronic.
You know, let me make a note to ask for that, because that would be, that'd be very good to have in the.
I think, well, I'd like a one building there.
I think the idea was to put a single building closer to Temple Street and.
Oh, within the building envelope then? Inside?
One building, twelve, two bedroom units.
Have they been to the?
They come into the zone.
Plenty, okay, oh, okay.
And then inside the.
Okay, I'll ask, I'll ask, that was Kalgavi, wasn't it?
Kalgavi.
I'll ask him for a PDF that we're working for. Okay, alright, and that's, that's at seven, we'll have the continuance of this case at eight, and do you have anything else yet?
Nope.
Nope? Okay, alright, can I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn for the year.
Adjourned for the year by Mr. Blas, second. All in favor?
Who's seconding it?
Chandler.
Mr. Chandler. Motion, the meeting is adjourned.